Am I live? Oh, I am. Good morning.
There you are.
Commissioner Wanda Watson is trying to log in remotely. So if you will be so kind to give us about another 120 seconds, we'll do our best and then we'll begin as quickly as possible. Thank you.
You guys ready?
I heard a beep.
That's a march. That's a march.
Okay, we've exceeded the 120 seconds. Please give us a few more seconds. Ms. Watson is almost dialed in.
Sixty-seven seconds for the kids out there.
Kids?
Yeah, for the kids out there. Six or seven seconds for the kids out there in the audience. That's the thing, six or seven. Six, seven.
They don't like our five.
Six, seven's the thing that teenagers are all saying.
My five seconds is anywhere from an hour to 10 minutes.
Yeah. My lordy's Halloween costumes are shirts that mine says six and hers says seven.
Good morning. It is now 10:05 in the Brazos County Commissioners Court. We'll come into regular session on this October 28th, 2025. If you will please rise for the invocation and pledge that I will take care of this morning. Heavenly Father, please look after us all as we do our best to do the county's business, working with our team of employees and our constituents as we move Brazos County through the 2025-26 fiscal year. We are so blessed to live in a community that has so much engagement and care for one another. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, good morning. Agenda item number two, call for citizen input. Today we have two Brazos County residents. First up, David Levine. David, please state your name and the precinct you reside in. Thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Levine. I'm in Precinct Two. I am here this morning representing Fawn Meadows HOA. What we are asking the court to consider is the adoption of a half-mile of road within the Fawn Meadows neighborhood. We're an unplanted subdivision. This road was built in around 2009. It was originally built to what appeared to be county specs at the time, but not adopted into the system. After speaking at length with the county engineer over the last several months, the engineer has requested we spend somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000 to improve a half-mile of road to a condition greater than the roads connecting to it, including the additional half-mile of Fawn Meadows, excuse me, Fawn Lake that is currently under county supervision and maintenance. Our request is that the commission take it under consideration to adopt into the system.
David, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The court now calls Christine Shimick. Ms. Shimick, thank you for being here today. Please state your name and the precinct you reside and do business in.
I just need a minute to make sure this is correct. I think it was...
It's a legal issue.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, is that good?
But it's in Spanish.
Okay, let me just make sure. Como estas? I don't know. Ya se más. Today I have concerns... Oh, Christine Shimick, Precinct Two. Today I have concerns about data centers. Mostly I have questions to consider. First, what do these data centers actually produce? No one seems to have a concise answer. I can't find any answers on local government websites. Why are so many data centers planned for the state of Texas? Power demands are incredibly high. Why? How is power used? Will power resources be diverted away from residents and local businesses? Water needs are incredibly high volume. Why? How is the water being used? Apparently, there are water issues in that Brazos and Robertson counties will be exporting our water. There was a lawsuit filed and then settled, apparently for half the volume of water. That's what my research indicates so far. So you can't have all of our water, just half of it. Trying to figure this one out. Meanwhile, we are told constantly that there is a population explosion and we're going to need water if that's true. A little more research. TechStop Project, replace existing bridges at the Navasota River, State Highway 30, to increase mobility. Design phase currently. The right-of-way acquisition and construction is planned to start in early 2027. Brazos County, Texas government website from August 9th, 2022, floodplain plan. At the bottom of the webpage, there is a bulleted list of four related resources. One of them is Texas Water Resources, Civil Engineering, and Uses of Dams. This document references the California Plan. So, questions. Are plans still in place to dam the Navasota River and flood the floodplain, aka parts of east Brazos County? This has been rumored for years. I'm still researching it. Power, KBTX, February 4th. Texas A&amp;M System announces partnership with four nuclear reactor companies to build at Relus. Small modular nuclear reactors. What is the cooling system plan? Is it evaporative cooling from a large body of water? What is the fuel source? Will nuclear reactors power the data centers? All the risk is on Brazos County residents, including students. If all goes well, A&amp;M gets bragging rights, patents the process, and then probably sells the technology back to the taxpayer who probably funded it to begin with. Were NDAs and closed-door meetings needed to get to this point? I am not a nuclear engineer. My dad was career military. He had nuclear clearance. He retired and then went to work at the Bay City Nuclear Plant and then retired a second time. I've heard a few stories. My biggest concerns are with fuel source and cooling mechanisms, and this involves the entire county. And as far as cooling mechanisms, I think that the... Again, I'm not an expert, but I think what A&amp;M is currently using is actually old technology. So if I'm not correct on that, I want to be corrected. There are new technologies and there are new fuel sources. Enriched uranium is just... It's a hazard. It was downgraded from 70% to 30% enrichment, I believe, but it's still something that can be used to create a bomb or a missile. My dad trained people on the use of missiles the entire time that he was certified. There's... I actually have a few seconds left, so I'm gonna leave.
Ms. Shimick, thank you so much. We will get back to you. David and Christine, thank you so much. We will move to agenda item number three, presentation and discussions today. Presentation on the Brazos County Tax Year 2024 Incentives Compliance Report by Kimberly Gonzalez, Brazos County Economic Development Coordinator, as well as presentation on Brazos County Tax Year 2024 Incentives Compliance Report by Ryan LSE Consulting for Greater Brazos Partnership, which I believe we have Louis Lopez, but today, right now, A. Kimberly Gonzalez, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, Kimberly Gonzalez, Brazos County Economic Development Coordinator. Today I am here to present the Brazos County Tax Year 2024 Incentives Compliance Report. We will begin by discussing the objectives of today, and that's to understand the different types of economic development incentives the county offers, review the economic development agreements currently in place by Brazos County, and to discuss the compliance status of each agreement. As we go through this presentation, you'll see three different types of agreements that I'll be reporting on today. The first will be our 381 agreements, the second will be our 312 agreements, and last will be our TIRS agreements. And we'll discuss each one of those as we move through. So to begin, we have our 381 agreements. This agreement is considered a tax incentive agreement and is a program by which the county may stimulate, encourage, and develop business location and commercial activity in the county, and that's from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. 381s are a rebate program. So the full taxable value of that property hits the tax rolls, and once the requirements as set forth in the contract that the county has in place with the company are met, the county then refunds that taxable value that the county... that the Commissioners Court has decided to abate. And the guidelines for these agreements are found in Chapter 381 of the Texas Local Government Code. Please feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. So for our existing 381 agreements, we currently have six agreements in place. You'll see on the screen that a couple of these, two are monitored by the Greater Brazos Partnership, four are monitored by Brazos County. So for our 381 agreements, we have a couple that are monitored by the Greater Brazos Partnership because there's multiple entities that are involved in these agreements. We are transitioning more so as county staff to monitoring all of those in-house. And after this... After the 2024 tax year, the only one that the Greater Brazos Partnership will be monitoring is the Fujifilm Amendment. And our consultants with the Greater Brazos Partnership will be presenting on Fujifilm and Lubrizol, and I'll be reporting on Adam Corporation, which is Oakmont subdivision, College Station Science Park, which is Providence Park at Research Valley. They had a name change after the contract was signed, Lawson Properties, and Lawson Properties leases their property to CC Creations and AVAPCO. To begin, we have Adam Corporation, which is Oakmont subdivision. The agreement was signed in 2015. This is a 12-year-long agreement from tax year 2020 to tax year 2031. So as we move through, you'll see some of these agreements are longer, some are shorter. It's all up to the discretion of the court. Incentive for tax year 2024 is 100% of the maintenance and operations rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value. And this contract does have a not-to-exceed amount of $5,150,000. The current total payout is $1,697,864. There has not been a request for tax year 2024 yet. Each of our contracts has a different due date that the company must meet for their reimbursement. Adam Corporation is closer to the end of the year, so we will expect that request to come in the next couple of months. And Adam Corporation is in compliance. Next, we have College Station Science Park, also now known as Providence Park at Research Valley. This agreement was signed in 2015. It's a 10-year-long agreement from tax year 2017 to tax year 2026. The incentive for tax year 2024 was 80% of the MNO rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value, with our payments not to exceed $800,000. Our current total payout is $305,493.92. The tax year 2024 payment was just shy of $62,000, and they are also in compliance. Next, we have Lawson Properties, and again, Lawson Properties contracts out the land to CC Creations. And this agreement was signed in 2022. It's a five-year-long agreement from tax year 2023 to tax year 2027. That incentive is 50% of the MNO rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value, and no refunds have been requested by the company. Next, we have AVAPCO. AVAPCO was signed in 2023. It's another five-year-long agreement from tax year 2025 to tax year 2029. The incentive for tax year 2024... There is no incentive for tax year 2024. The first year for incentive for this one is this tax year, so we would see that first payout next year. However, there have been some construction delays on this project, so staff is working with the company to update the agreement if needed. So we're planning to have additional plans from AVAPCO in the coming couple of months. They've had some revisions to their timeline.
Kimberly, for the court, you and I did Zoom with them this week, or last week, and they will get back to us ASAP, correct?
Yes, sir. We did meet with them this week, and we're excited because there's actually probably going to be a higher investment than originally planned. And we're excited that the company is still planning to build and expand here in Brazos County. They do have a facility here already. It's called RVS, and it's a subsidiary of AVAPCO, so this is another subsidiary. So it's essentially an expansion project. So we're excited to continue to have them here and that they want to grow in Brazos County. Next, we'll move on to the 312 agreements. This is the Property Tax Abatement Act. So these are our true abatements. These are tools that are available to cities, counties, and special districts to attract new industries and to encourage the retention and development of existing businesses through property tax exemptions or reductions. Again, this is from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. The 312 agreements have a different method than the 381 agreements. These are not rebate programs. The 312 agreements reduce the value on the property tax rolls by an agreed-on amount, and the companies receive a reduction in the taxes from the exclusion of the increased valuation and the percentage of appraised value that is reduced leads to a tax reduction. So if a company comes in, let's say they have a million-dollar investment, and the court wants to give the 50% of an incentive for that property, that will never be... That increase will never be accounted for when it comes to tax purposes. And these guidelines are found in Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code. We have three existing 312 agreements. We have just... The court has just begun doing... Just began doing 312 agreements. So for these agreements, that's why you're not going to see data on these. It's because none of these are old enough to have... The construction has not began yet. We have America's Foundry LLC, Honeywell International, and Relus Campus Data and Research Center. America's Foundry, this agreement was signed in 2024. It's a 10-year-long agreement from tax year 2026 to tax year 2035. There was no incentive for tax year 2024. This one has a staggered abatement, so from tax year 2026... So there's tax year 2026 to tax year 2027. So from tax year 2026, so there's tax year 2026 to tax year 2035. And then we have an eighty percent of the MNO portion for the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value for five years, followed by fifty percent for five years. So it's eighty percent for five and then fifty percent for five. And there's a required incremental value increase by December 31st, 2035, of $10 billion on this project. And the total new full-time job creation by December 31st of 2035 is expected to be 1,800 jobs. Next, we have Honeywell International. This agreement was signed in 2024. It's a five-year-long agreement from tax year 2025 to tax year 2039. There was no incentive for tax year 2024. And the abatement for tax year 2025 to 2029 is fifty percent of the MNO rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value for five years. The total capital investment by December 31st of 2029 is expected to be $120 million. This agreement is contingent on Honeywell receiving fifty percent of funding from federal and state grants, and that funding hasn't been received yet. We do have a meeting scheduled with Honeywell this coming Friday to discuss this along with the City of Bryan because the City of Bryan also has a very similar agreement in place with Honeywell. We have next the Relus Campus Data and Research Center. This agreement was signed in 2025. It's a ten-year-long agreement from tax year 2029 to tax year 2038. The incentive for tax year 2024, there is not one until tax year 2029. The abatement for tax year 2029 to tax year 2038 is fifty percent of the MNO rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value for ten years. We're expecting a $700 million capital investment on this one by December 31st of 2038, with a new full-time job creation of 100 by December 31st of 2038. And we have a maximum abatement amount on this one of $13 million. Once that is hit, the county will no longer be incentivizing the company. And we will finish up with our tax increment reinvestment zones, also known as TERS agreements. Tax increment financing is a method that local governments can use to pay for improvements that will draw private investment to an area. Tax increment financing redirects property tax in a specified geographic area that's designated as a tax increment reinvestment zone to pay for improvements in the zone. And this is also from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. The method this works is that, by which this works is it allows a portion of the taxes collected on the captured appraised value or tax increment to be deposited in a tax increment fund, also known as a TIF. Revenues in the TIF can only be used for improvements in that zone. And the guidelines are found in Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. Brazos County currently has two existing TERS. We have TERS 10, which is Traditions, and TERS 21, which is Downtown Bryan. Tax year 2024 is actually the last payout for our TERS 10 for Traditions, so you won't see that on the presentation after this year. We are, we are done with this agreement. It was signed in 2000, amended in 2014. It's a twenty-five-year-long agreement from tax year 2000 to tax year 2024. And it began with a hundred percent of the MNO rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value. And then we dropped it down to eighty percent. And the tax year 2024 payment was $1,562,154.83. And last, we have TERS 21, which is Downtown Bryan. This agreement was signed in 2024. It's a ten-year-long agreement from tax year 2026 to tax year 2035 or until the county has attributed an amount of $5 million to the tax increment fund. So this one also has a cap. There's no incentive for tax year 2024. And then, starting in tax year 2026 to tax year 2035, it's eighty percent of the maintenance and operations rate portion of the real property taxes collected and attributable to the incremental taxable value. This specific TERS agreement was with the City of Bryan, and it was, it's to help fund the public portion of parking for a new development in downtown Bryan. Okay, that's the compliance report. Do you, any of you have any questions regarding the information presented?
Kimberly, thank you so much. Commissioners?
No, for me, thanks.
Commissioner Watson. Kimberly, well done. Thank you so much for that update. And next is Ryan, LLC.
We'll introduce, if it's okay with you, Judge.
Please.
We can introduce Mr. Salman Khan, who's with the Greater Brazos Partnership, who will then introduce their consultants.
Salman, welcome. Please state your name for the viewing and listening audience.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Salman Khan from the Greater Brazos Partnership, currently the interim president and CEO. First of all, thank you for your time and your support to the Greater Brazos Partnership. I also want to point out the greater working relationship we have with Kimberly Gonzalez and Ed Bull at the county in terms of the economic development projects we work on. So for 2024, two projects, you know, were under agreement, were monitored for performance, compliance by the Greater Brazos Partnership on behalf of Brazos County. And we've asked Ryan Inc. to prepare that report. So Luis Lopez is senior consultant at Ryan's, driven in from Austin to present on our behalf. So Luis, if you could come by. Thank you.
Thank you, Salman. Mr. Lopez, thank you for being here this morning.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yes, so we are contracted by the Greater, by the Brazos Partnership to come back, to provide compliance for various incentive agreements to the county. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and to meet with you, all of you. It'll be a short presentation, but compared to Kimberly's, but we'll go over the metrics for you guys. As part of the Ryan Tax Services role, we work closely with the various companies to perform independent and objective internal reviews. Our goal is to evaluate compliance for the agreements made to the county. Throughout these engagements, we reach out to companies for, to gather their information, review their procedures, and share findings with a cross-reference with what is reported to the county to verify that all agreements are in compliance within the metrics of their Chapter 381 agreements and for each of the companies. And, yes, never used this before, but, okay. Like I said, short presentation. Fuji Films, they just amended their agreement on June 2025, so reporting won't begin until 2029. But we do have LSPI. We reviewed their records, pulled their reports, payroll, capital investments. They are under compliance. And they're right now benefiting for the tax year 2024, a twenty percent tax incentive by the Brazos County. Again, the incentive for 2024 is twenty percent. It will drop to ten percent next year. And in return, LSPI has provided the metrics in the agreement. They've complied for all of them and actually exceeded some of them, almost double. But for the new payroll wages, they were in compliance for 1.5 million. They obviously, they have actually reported 3 million in new payroll. For property value investments, they were, they agreed to 20 million. They are at 30 million, so way beyond the property value. And then lastly, they were to create 24 jobs, new jobs. There are at 29 new jobs for this year. Next year will be the last year, I guess, if we get to present for you guys. I'll be the last year for the incentive agreement. But yeah, thank you this morning for having us, for allowing me to present. And I'll be back next year for the last year of compliance. Any questions for me?
We look forward to that, Mr. Lopez. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Lopez? None?
No.
No. Mr. Lopez, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving to agenda item number four. Approval requested from the District Clerk for an order of indemnification in the amount of $4,281.80 due to clerical errors for the period of 1986 to 2020. Funds are requested to be taken from the 2425 budget.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number five. Approval requested from Human Resources for the acceptance of family passes, each valid for four entries to the Brazos Valley Fair and Rodeo provided by the Brazos Valley Fair.
Move for approval.
Move for, we have a motion, do we have a second? And we have a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Is that for next year?
This was for this past weekend, which was a booming success. I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 to 400. And the fair had an incredible attendance. If you didn't go, we look forward to seeing you next year. Any further discussion? There being none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number six. Approval requested from the Veterans Service Office for acceptance of a $500 check donation from Common Spirit to be used for the Veterans Resource Fair on November 1st, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Just a clarification. Common Spirit is St. Joseph Hospital here in town, so thank you for that support.
Commissioners, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number seven. Approval requested from the Brazos County Sheriff's Office to apply for a fiscal 25 Office of Justice Program's Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number eight. Approval requested for the grant agreement with the Texas Controller of Public Accounts for Rural Prosecutor's Office Salary Assistance Program, Award 1A-00002046 for the District Attorney.
I'm not sure you had the zeros.
Did I get all the zeros? One, two, three, four, five, six zeros.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I always look at these grants with a jaundice eye. And the reason is, I'm glad we're going to get this. $275,000 is a lot of money that can help, help us out. But at the end of the year, it could all go away. And remember the fact that we are hiring additional people and we're taking them on as our responsibility if the grant is not approved next year.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification. That, we have missed Payne to come up to help clarify this issue. Nina Payne, our Budget Officer, thank you for being here, Nina.
I'd like to make one correction. When this grant goes away, it is not the county's responsibility to take it on. It will be up to Commissioners Court during that time to accept the increases. And with the amount that the SB 22 contributes to this grant, that is a fourth of a penny that is part of the tax rate. And so at that time, when this grant does go away, it will be up to Commissioners Court to absorb that cost. Until then, it's not our responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Payne, our auditor. Ms. Turner is here to clarify.
Hi, Marcy Turner, County Auditor. I just wanted to clarify, we're not adding positions with this. This is a supplemental to existing employees.
Thank you for the clarity. Commissioner Brown does that answer? But your, your worry is noted, and thank you for that.
I see we have the District Attorney here. Maybe he might want to make some comments.
Would the District Attorney like to make a comment? You do not have to, sir. But Mr. Parsons is here amongst us in the audience.
He just likes hanging out with us.
I want a black robe really bad.
That's true. No, I was going to echo what the auditor said. This is not for new people. This is for individuals who are already in the office. And just to kind of give an overview, there is right now a prevailing crisis across the state of Texas and across the country of prosecutors who are leaving the profession. And so the legislature, in their wisdom, provided this extra money to try to help prosecutors stay in the profession because as of right now, they are, have two to three times the caseload of their defense attorney counterparts and are making less money. And so that is one of the reasons why that thing is there, to try to put them simply on par, which they really, in terms of caseload, it's never, it's not equal at all. But that is the reason for that. Second, we sign, all of our people sign a waiver knowing this money could go away at any point in time, and we sign that every year. But to, and we'll be talking about this in the upcoming months, about the crisis of prosecutors leaving the profession or moving to other places because of increased money. So I just wanted to lay that out there and kind of lay that groundwork.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for District Attorney Parsons?
Well, I just want to say, though it wasn't applicable here, I agree with the spirit of what Commissioner Brown is saying. And when we do take on grants, receive grant money, just keep in mind that in some cases, not this one, when that goes away, it may be incumbent upon us to then accept that financial burden. So it's well stated, though not here, I agree with the spirit of what you're saying.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion? Mr. Parsons, Mrs. Turner, and Mrs. Payne, thank you for the clarification. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number nine. Approval requested from Juvenile Services Department for acceptance of $7,199.64 from the Texas Education Agency to purchase laptops in cases for youth attending the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program.
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
It's great, great program. Glad to see these youths are able to keep up with their studies while they're our guests.
Agreed. Commissioners, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 10. Approval requested for the Brazos County inmate work crew labor to assist the Rotary Club of Bryan to move approximately 1,200 American flags on 10-foot poles from the warehouse into utility trailers in November 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
I just hats off to Chief Stewart and his crew, who have the inmates out doing that. It's great for the inmates, especially low-risk, to be able to go out and participate in something like that. It's great for the community, certainly benefits. As Precinct 2 Commissioner, I just wanted to throw also a shout out that they consistently go out and work along Highway 30 and Elma Weeden Roads and other areas where we have a lot of litter pickup. So just great, great to have the inmate crew out there doing more work. They do a lot for the county.
And they also get their time cut, don't they? If they are in any of these projects?
Yes. The sheriff is shaking his head, yes. Thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion? Thank you, Sheriff Dicky, for that head nod. We have a motion and a second on agenda item number 10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 11. Approval of the following job descriptions.
Move for approval, A through J.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Comments? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 12. Request from the county judge for the following personnel change with effective dates as of October 25, 2025. This change has no impact to the county judge's fiscal 2026 budget.
Move for approval, A and B.
We have a motion.
A and B.
Agenda item number 12. Do we have a second?
She hear, General? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 13. Request for information technology for the following personnel changes with effective date as October 28, 2025. This change has no impact on the Information Technology Department's fiscal year 2026 budget.
Move for approval, A through H.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I just have a question on G and H. There's, you know, we have this, we have this study out on, on pay for our county employees. And in this, these two instances, we're raising both of these positions two steps. Instead of one step, which is normal, we're increasing them two steps. I'd just like to have an explanation of why we're doing that.
Okay, we have two folks in the audience. First up, Budget Officer Nina Payne and Eric Caldwell with IT. Ms. Payne, would you like to elaborate first?
Sure. On the budget portion of it, it's not increasing the budget at all. We're taking steps away from other positions to cover the increase on the other positions. And so it's not, it's not affecting their budget. But I'll leave it up to Eric to explain the reasoning behind those increases on that part.
Information Technology Department Head, Eric Caldwell.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Eric Caldwell, Chief Information Officer. Commissioner Brown, this is the result of a major reorganization of the IT department.
Commissioner Brown, this is the result of a major reorganization of the IT department. I had a senior position that was head of roughly a third of my staff. That position, that employee, all of the equipment, the telephone, even the furniture, has gone away. It was taken over by project management, and I think in the end, this will make a lot of sense. But with the departure of that senior leader over a third of my staff, I had to reorganize internally considerably. And in fact, that is the reason for the job description changes that you saw in agenda item number eleven. Those job description changes were to reflect the new reporting structure. In the case of the employees that are getting a two-step bump, these are employees who have never had managerial responsibilities whatsoever. But part of the restructuring, I have given them leadership roles over smaller sections of my staff. And I thought it was appropriate to compensate them for these additional responsibilities that they are taking on.
It's just unusual to see a Texas two-step, you know?
Well, in my history with the county, two steps is not all that uncommon. It is the, typically, it has been the cap. I don't recall ever, anybody ever getting more than two steps. I'm not saying that it has not happened, but I don't think that it's altogether uncommon to see a two-step bump. It is certainly uncommon for a major, in my experience at least, it's very uncommon to have to restructure a department like this in the middle of a fiscal year.
True.
And again, I just thought it was appropriate that these people who have never had managerial responsibilities who now have to assume that should be compensated for it.
And they have the talent to perform.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And thank you for your willingness to change. Also, Commissioner Brown, do you have any questions for Mr. Caldwell?
No.
Thank you. Eric, thank you. Jennifer Salazar with HR for increased.
Good morning. To answer your question about the comp and benefit study, Segal is aware that these changes may happen. So upon approval, we will notify them so they can incorporate it to the study.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, thank you for your question. Comment one more time, it has no impact on the budget. To all those that helped clarify that, thank you. Agenda item number thirteen, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number fourteen. Approval requested to transfer one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Fund eleven thousand Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund to Fund forty-one thousand General Obligation Debt Service Fund for the Certificate of Obligation two thousand and fifteen and Limited Refunding Bond Series two thousand and seventeen for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number fifteen. Approval requested to expend one million dollars budgeted in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six for other post-employment benefits. The funds will be transferred from the OPEB, trust managed by public finance, financial management, and be invested principal in earnings to benefit Brazos County Retiree Health Insurance.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number sixteen. Approval requested for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six revision of the capital asset policy to align with the state and federal capital asset policy.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number seventeen. Approval of engagement letter from West Webb, all written in gentry, for legal representation of services in case number twenty-five dash zero zero two eight five one CB dash four seven two.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have citizen input at this time. The county calls Kathy Vienz. Ms. Vienz, please state your name and the precinct you live in.
Kathy Vienz, Precinct Two. I was wondering how much you can expound on this lawsuit against the court, what the liability of the individual commissioners are in a situation like this, and what the dollar amount is.
Bruce, are you at liberty to?
I'm sorry, Kathy, run the questions by me again.
I would like to know what the liability of the individual commissioners are as far as a suit.
The lawsuit doesn't ask for monetary damages. It asks for them to clear the title to a point one one seven acre piece of property out on Jones Road. So it's just, it's an argument over whether an easement is effective or not.
Okay, can you tell me what that property address is again?
No ma'am, it's in the, it's in the suit.
Oh, I thought you just said it, okay.
No, no, it's point one one seven acres.
Okay.
This whole argument is about.
Property. Okay, I thought it was something else, okay. So is that a normal thing that the commissioners get sued individually?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Vienz, thank you.
But our hope is that there's no liability associated with that.
Did you move to the cool kids precinct? You said precinct two.
Oh, no, I meant four.
Everybody wants to be in, you see that? Everybody wants to be in two. All right, well, good try.
On agenda item number seventeen, we have a motion and approval. Commissioner Brown.
I don't know who's responsible, I just wanna thank whoever it is for using a local law firm. Good for us, that's it.
Duly noted, thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion?
It's the temple office of West Webb. Just kidding.
Thank you for that comic relief, both of you. Agenda item number seventeen, Commissioners, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number eighteen. Approval of interlocal agreement between the City of Brian and Brazos County for Brazos County Sheriff's Department Inmate Services.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Again, thanks for the Sheriff's Office for finding clever ways to benefit the community with our guests' help.
Thank you, Commissioner Conderla. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number nineteen. Approval of the following community support contract for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Move for approval A through F.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty. Approval to sell an X-ray machine to Burleson County for a total of one dollar pursuant to local government code two six three point one five two. This item is no longer in use.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, this would have been a good time, since we're selling this to them for only a dollar. It'd been a good time for us to get a contract that they'll use our medical examiner's office when we open.
Commissioner Conderla.
I think they're overpaying. But the benefit of selling an item like this for a dollar, some people ask is, when you dispose of an X-ray machine, it's actually a costly endeavor. There's things you've gotta do with radioactive isotopes, I think, radioactive parts of the piece of equipment. So if they can make use of it, by God bless them, that's great, we're not using it. But more than anything, we're not having to dispose of it, which is an expensive proposition.
Absolutely, thank you for that clarification. Commissioners, any further discussion on agenda item number twenty? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-one. Approval of no award for RFP, number CIP twenty-five dash five two seven road and bridge office building renovations due to moving, removing phase one from the scope of work and potential change of scope in the future for re-advertising for this project.
Move for approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-two. Approval of deductive change order, CIP number twenty-five dash five six nine Leonard Road stabilization with solid bridge construction in the amount of fifty-four thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars, bringing the new contract total to one million five hundred eighty-seven, five hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Just, these people ought to get a gold star award. I mean, it's not very often that we see contracts like this being decreased. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioners, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-three. Approval of change order number one to CIP number twenty-five dash six zero seven replacement of HVAC system for Brazos County Employee Clinic and Elections Building with Carrier Commercial Services in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for additional work completed, bringing the total contract amount to sixty-one thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Judge, could you clarify the contract number twenty-five dash?
Six zero two.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioners, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-four. Approval of interlocal agreement twenty-six dash zero six three with Texas A&amp;M University for cybersecurity services.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
I've got a bunch of questions. Who is the staff person on this?
Yep, we have multiple. I think Mr. Caldwell will win the race to the microphone.
Eric, how many computers does a county have? Desktop machines and laptops, thousand ninety-five-ish.
Okay, well, the contract is for a thousand subscriptions, so who's gonna be left out?
Morning Commissioners, Kevin Joyner, Chief Information Security Officer. Our agreement with the SOC Security Operations Center, Texas A&amp;M, is that they cover FTEs and not devices. So I personally have a laptop and a desktop computer that I use for different purposes because that's what I need to do. But I only count, it covers both devices, I only count as one licensee. And so we've got several people like that that have multiple devices, and this allows us to cover them, and that's just part of our agreement.
Under one FTE.
Under one FTE, yeah. And it allows us to cover, those are FTEs that we report to the state for acquired cybersecurity training. So we have to report for people that use the computers as part of their job. So we have several FTEs in the county who don't have devices, and we're not paying for them.
Will our election servers be included in this?
The servers that store the data on our network are included. The devices that tabulate votes and the devices that, when you, like you go to there and you cast your vote, they're not connected to a network ever. They're, you can't, you plug the cable in and it doesn't work. So no, we're not gonna put that on there because we would actually be introducing risk if we put something on there for them to monitor. We don't wanna do that.
Clarify that one more time. You plug in a cable and it does not?
It does not work, right. That's part of the EAC, the Election Assistance Commission's job, is to make sure that a solution does not allow for network connectivity. And that's the way that ours is set up. Those are the devices you cast ballots on, the network does not work. We have two computers that are used for tabulating, and we connect them together for the purposes of tabulating votes. When we do mail-in ballots, especially for presidential elections, there's a lot of mail-in ballots. And so we need to have two of them going simultaneously, but those two devices are only connected to each other.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioner Brown?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Nadel's Conderla.
No.
There being none, we have a motion and a second on agenda item number twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-five. Approval of contract twenty-six dash zero six four Criminal Alien Assistance Program Initiative with Justice Benefits Incorporated.
Move for approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-six. Approval of contract number twenty-six dash zero six five Media Monitoring Software with Meltwater News U.S. Incorporated in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-seven. Approval of amendment number one to contract number twenty-five dash zero seven five Oracle Cloud Services with Oracle America.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-eight. Request for approval of the final plat of Southern Point Section six hundred, sixteen point two one acres, Sternet D. Smith League Survey, A dash two one zero, City of College Station, ETJ, Brazos County, Texas. Site is located in Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-nine. Consider and take action on the Wixen Creek Specialty Utility Permit to construct a road board at one 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 forty-five Oak Lake Road to provide water services. Site is located in Precinct Two.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty. Consider and take action on the Wildfire Energy Utility Permit to lay a temporary twelve-inch polyurethane water line within the right-of-ways of the following county roads in Precinct Four.
Move for approval A through D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-one. Consider and take action on the Wildfire Energy Utility Permit to lay a temporary twelve-inch polyurethane water line within right-of-ways of the following county roads in Precinct Four. Before, we have a motion on A through D. C, Ry School Road is supposed to be one thousand feet and one crossing. Clerical error of one thousand feet, not one hundred.
Move for approval with the exception of item C being one thousand feet?
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, the ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-two. Approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, June twenty twenty-five, August twenty twenty-five. Cash contribution of fifty-one thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-nine cents to Specialty Court Program.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-three, approval of Treasurers' Report for August twenty twenty-five.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-four, tax refund applications for the following.
Move for approval A. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-five, Commissioners' Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move for approval A through M.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-six, budget amendments.
Move for approval A and B. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-seven, personnel change of status.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number thirty-eight, payment of claims.
Move for approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. We will jump over items thirty-nine and forty to agenda item number forty-one for acknowledgements of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget to actuels by fund as October twenty twenty-five, and acknowledgement of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six contingency budget to actuels by funds as of October twenty twenty-five. Agenda item number forty-two, acknowledgement of the monthly report submitted in October twenty-four. Excuse me, submitted in October twenty twenty-five. Agenda item number forty-three, the juvenile director's report on detention population. Ms. Linda is not here, so I will read that for you. There are twenty-eight juveniles in detention, twenty males, eight females, twenty-one youth on electric monitors. Agenda item number forty-four, the sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff Wayne Dickey, thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. With our new format, we're gonna try changing this up just a little bit, and so we thought it'd be more relevant to have a snapshot of September rather than today. So for September, the average daily population was seven hundred and sixty-four, six hundred and fifty-two men, a hundred and twelve women, and we had eight hundred and thirteen booked in in September.
Excellent. Sheriff, are any of those inmates ICE eligible?
A number of those inmates are being held on iceholds, yes. All of those iceholds are in addition to local charges.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, any further questions for Sheriff Dickey? Sheriff, thank you for being here this morning. Agenda item number forty-five, announcements of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Commissioner Nettles.
Just a reminder that today, this evening, the Chamber Commerce sponsoring a minority business owners conference out at the Brazos Center. It's free to the public from six to eight-thirty. So encourage everybody to get out there, and then of course also Saturday, we've already mentioned the Veteran Fair and Resource Conference is going to be at the Brazos Center Saturday at noon.
Commissioner Caldwell.
Spoke with Jason Ware walking in, and we are still under a burn ban in Brazos County. Just so everyone knows, we did get some rain, but we're still too dry on the average countywide for lifting that ban. And just keep all those in the path of Hurricane Melissa in your prayers. I think that's gonna be a really bad one, what they're saying.
Commissioner Brown.
Just for our staff to please, please try to use local businesses anytime you can on the bidding process. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think we mentioned the fair with our family pass. I see the fair board and expo team. Thank you for a great fair weekend. We look forward to upcoming. We did go over the success yesterday in a long meeting with the entire fair board, and we're looking forward to a bigger and better rodeo and fair next year, so thank you. We will move back to agenda item number thirty-nine to convene an executive session pursuant to the following. Item A has been pulled from the agenda. We will only discuss B, Texas Government Code five-five-one zero eight-seven for deliberation regarding economic development relations. And for B, the court will require the presence of Aubrey Kimberley, Marcy, Nina, Bruce, and Ed. With that, we will convene. It is now eleven oh five, and we will convene an executive session. It is eleven twenty-one, and the Brazos County Commissioners' Court is out of executive session. There is no action to be taken. I do have a clarification on agenda item number fifteen. Approval requested to expand one million budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six for other post-employment benefits, OPEB. The funds will be transferred to the OPEB trust managed by Public Financial Management and be invested principal in earnings to benefit Brazos County Retiree Health Insurance. Do we need a motion? Yeah, it has been approved. I think I had a grammatical reading error. It is now clarified. Thank you. That only other announcement I have is the Day of Giving that this community did last week. It's truly amazing, at one point five million, that shows you how engaged truly this community is and how much they believe in the charitable events that take place in this community, so we are very, very blessed. With that, it's now eleven twenty-two, another Brazos County Commissioners' Court on October twenty twenty, twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, is now adjourned.